Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Board Wrap-Up Show for the month of September 2014. Our guest is Superintendent Dr. David Pennington. And the board meeting on the September Board of Education meeting, I know that you went over a lot of legislative rules that have changed. And again, you could probably spend a couple of hours talking about them, but I'm sure there are a couple that you want to highlight for our audience.
Well, I think that, again, if you, I can't imagine anybody, if they were trying to watch last night's board meeting, they probably took a snooze during my discussion. In fact, we, I kind of looked out in the, in the audience and I saw a couple of our guests last night had their eyes closed while I was going over board policy. I think we had, I think it was 20 different changes in board policy that, that we had to make last night, or at least to have the first discussion, we'll officially adopt them in October, that were, and of those, the vast majority of those were required by state law. You know, some of the, some of the changes in law affected multiple areas of policy. One had to do with, we had legislation passed last year that says that if you have a concealed carry permit, or an open carry permit, that you can now have your weapon on school property, in the parking lot, in your car, locked. And, and so that touched several, several, several places. And I want to make, I want to make that clear to the public. It doesn't mean that if you have an open carry permit, or a concealed carry permit, that you can bring that weapon inside the school building. You can have it on school property, in your car, and locked. So, if you have a concealed carry permit, and you come to the school for whatever reason, please leave it in your vehicle. Now, if it's, you know, the question is, well, if it's concealed carry, how are you going to know? Well, I don't, and we're not going to know that, but, I mean, just, you know, I think that, that one, one of the, of the things that I think is consistent with those who have been advocates for changes in gun laws, is that those who are responsible gun owners obey the law. And so, I just would encourage everyone to make sure that you do that. Because I'm, I'm pretty sure of this, the first time somebody with a concealed carry permit, something happens in a school building, and they, and they find out they're in the building, I mean, it will, it, it will cause a backlash against that legislation. So, so we had several pieces of policy that talked about that. We had a policy that talked about junior ROTC programs. We don't have one in Ponca City, but in those districts that do, those students do drills and things with rifles. Those rifles don't have mechanisms that allow you to shoot them, but under previous state law, those were illegal to have at school. This just clarifies that you can have those. So, the lots, lots of the changes we made touched that. We had also policies that we adopted in relation to e-cigarettes. We just clarified what we, state law just clarified what, we made a decision district last year, that, you know, we ban all tobacco products from our campuses 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And e-cigarettes are a part of that ban. So, if you use e-cigarettes, and you were planning on coming to the football game Friday night, and lighting your e-cigarette while you sit in the stands, don't do it. It's a violation of district policy, and you will be asked to leave the premises. So, again, leave your cigarettes, leave your, chewing tobacco, leave your snuff in your car before you come into the stadium. If you, you know, if you just do those things, you won't be tempted, you know, in the moment to, to, to reach out and do that. Now, again, do we have tobacco police walk in the stands looking for that? No, we don't. But I would hope that our patrons would be conscious of our rules and understand that it, that the purpose of all this is, is to, is to have a healthy community, but more than anything else, have a healthy student body. And, and as adults in our community, we set examples for our kids. And so, those examples are the same whether you're at home, or whether you're in the football stadium. So, so obviously, that's something that, that we think's important to, to make sure that we do. We had, we had another thick piece of policy last night that had to do with parental rights. We've, and typically, and kind of in general, what that bill did is it took different parts of the, of state legislation where there were, where there were requirements for school districts and notification to parents about curriculum and instruction and those kinds of things, and kind of put them into one place. And so, where maybe we had different policies that had to do with the rights parents had, for example, you know, ever since I was in school, back in, a long ago than I care to admit, you know, we've provided sex education in public schools. A few years ago, we were required to have a, a public meeting about, right before we do those classes. And we send notice out to those parents of children at those appropriate grade levels and say, you know, "We're getting ready to talk, have a sex education class, lesson, and we're, if you want to review the curriculum materials for that, we're going to have a meeting at the Board of Education building." And so, those parents can come and they can see what we're going to present in that class. And then, if they want to opt out of that, then they, there's a form they sign. So, now that's, we have a policy that has all those kinds of things. If you've, we've had a policy for years, that if there was something, an instructional, some instructional material that a parent found objectional, maybe it was a film, or maybe it was a book, there's a procedure they go through to, to, to have that material reviewed by committee. So, now, you know, that's in a, that's in one central place now in our board policy. So, that's, so that's kind, so that was, we did that last night. And the other policy that we adopted that, that probably, you know, may be something that people noticed more than, than some other things, had to do with public participation at board meetings. Several years, for years and years and years, the policy in Ponca City said that you, when it came time to public participation, you could not say anything about school personnel. You couldn't come to a board meeting to complain about football coach, English teacher, high school principal, whatever it was. And then, about five years ago, because of a court case in another state, school districts were notified by the State School Board Association, "You can't have that restriction anymore." If you have an open forum, then you can limit the amount of time that that, that those people can speak, but they can basically talk about anything they want to. And so, we changed our policy appropriately. About a year after that, School Board Association came back and said, "Well, you know, we really made a mistake. We don't have to do that in Oklahoma. Board meetings are meetings in public, they are not public meetings." And so, you can, you know, you can take control over that open session. So, there's that balance between the fact that we are having a public me, a meeting held in public, not a public meeting, but allowing the public to be able to give their opinion. And so, we just kind of had restructured that, and basically, the change, the first change is, is that, you know, we're going to go back to the way we were here for, for probably 20 years, and that is, that when somebody comes to the board meeting and they ask to speak, it has to be about a topic that's on the agenda. So, if they want to talk about, I don't know, you want to talk about the English Learning Language Program, but that's not on the agenda, then, then you're not going to be able to speak. If you want to talk about personnel, whether it's to sing somebody's praises or to criticize, that's, you're not going to be able to do that. Okay? Individuals, we're going to ask people who, who want to speak to fill out a form, so that we know who they are, and we can make sure that what they want to talk about is appropriate for the agenda that night. And then, and then, and it clarifies that if there is something that somebody in the community wants to discuss with the board, then there is a procedure to do that, which we've always had in board policy, which is you contact the central office seven days before the, before the meeting, and you ask them to put it on the agenda. And then, the superintendent, board president, will determine whether or not that's an appropriate agenda item. You know, we've been very fortunate over the years, in that the 10 years I've been here, the vast majority of times, our patrons who have come to speak to the board have been, have been very, very polite, they've stayed within their timeframes, they've, they've, they've not been specifically critical of employees, and, and that's, and that's been good. But, you know, the reason, the reason all this stuff exists is because of the "what of" situation. And the thing that, that I think the public generally doesn't understand, is that the Board of Education, at the end of the day, they are the final decider on whether, whether an employee keeps or loses their job. Okay? So, we have a procedure we go through, where we, where principal evaluates, they make a recommendation, and then, and then the board, then they make that recommendation to me, then I recommend the renewal, or non-renewal of someone's contract. That individual has a right to have a hearing before the board. Okay? Well, when that hearing happens, that, the Board of Education needs to be neutral. In the words, they need to be, they need to be able to sit at that meeting as five people, and they need to be able to hear the administration present their reasons why that person should either be terminated, or should no longer have a, or no longer continue with the district the next year. That individual needs to be able to present their evidence to the board, saying why they should not be terminated, or why they should be able to retain their job for the next year. That can't be fair to either side if, if the board has heard about this individual in a positive or negative way before the meeting. So, when someone comes to the board meeting and they criticize a third-grade teacher, you know, if we have, if the administration maybe has put that person on a plan of improvement, or has been concerned, you know, is concerned about that person's instruction, that individual, through that action, has basically poisoned the well, so to speak. And it makes it harder for the administration to go ahead and either non-renew or dismiss that person, because that individual can claim, if we get to a hearing, "Well, the board wasn't neutral. They couldn't be a fair judge, because I had a parent that showed up three months ago that complained about my performance." And so, even though the board may go ahead and accept the administration's recommendation to non-renew or terminate, when that person appeals that case, they have a great case at the, at the Court of Appeals level. So, that's why those policies exist. You know, there are correct procedures to go through. If an individual is unhappy with a decision that a teacher's made, or administrator's made, if they don't like something that's going on at the school, that there's, there are correct procedures. You know, and that is, you start at your building level. If you're not happy at the building level, then you go see the central office administration. And if we can't get that resolved at point A or point B, then at that time, you go to the board. And anytime, anytime that that is circumvented, it creates, it creates procedural due process kind of problems for the district as a whole. And so, we're going to tighten that up. And again, you know, is, is anything that's going on in Ponca City? No, but I tell you what, as you look across the state of Oklahoma, you've seen these issues happen all across the state, where, you know, a parent group, or somebody's gone in and, you know, and they poisoned the well, so to speak, and, and an employee has ended up winning a judgment against a school district because of an employment action, or some other action, and it, and, you know, from the appeals court position, they went back and said, "Well, these, these board members weren't really neutral." And so, that's, so that's, that's a change that we're making. And again, it'll be, you know, I mean, maybe once a year, somebody comes to the board and speaks. So, I think once people get used to the procedure, they'll be, they'll be fine with it, and, you know, we're really not going to, I don't think we'll see a lot of them. And it's not going to have a big effect, but again, it looks different, and sometimes that can cause people some, and you know, I've done this long enough to know that when somebody's upset about something, you know, the first thing they do is they want to come talk to the board. Well, a lot of times, what they want to talk to the board about is not really anything, is not really a board decision. I mean, it is an administrative decision, it's something the school administration needs to work with. Because the reality is, you know, what's happened in the past, somebody comes to the board and, and the, and because board policy, the way it's written even now, the board's not, cannot address the issue, they're not going to engage in a conversation with a patron about whatever it is they want to talk about. And if it's an issue that they believe, that they want more information, they're going to direct the superintendent to find that information. So, it's eventually going to come back through my office anyway, so let's just do things the right way, follow the right procedures, and move forward. And I think that, that at the end of the day, there's probably not a, a number of issues that really need the board's direct attention.
But just to, to be clear, because not recently, but a few years ago, if people want to come and they want to address a certain person that is hired by the school system, the fact that they can't is not your decision, it's something that is a state decision.
Well, it, I mean, it is the board's decision to adopt that policy, but the reason we do that is because of the due process rights that every individual has that works for this school district. And we have to be protective of that due process. And again, sometimes people forget that school employees are state employees. So, they are government employees. And so, those due process rights are extremely important, because you're not just talking about, you know, I mean, every, we have what we call procedural and substantive due process rights for state employees. Not only does the, does the procedure have to be fair, okay, but the rules involving them have to be fair. And you can't, you know, that board, when it comes time to employee decisions, they have to be as neutral as possible. And they can't be neutral. And that's the same thing that happens when somebody picks up the phone, which people like to do. I mean, they want to pick up the phone and call a board member where they're unhappy about the football coach, or the basketball coach, or a teacher, or an administrator. You know, they want to pick up the phone and call the board member, but they, the board member can't have that conversation. Because again, if they have that conversation, and then, six months later, that board member has to sit in a meeting where that person's job is on the line, that board member has to recuse themselves because they're not neutral. You know, the only, the only, the only employee in this district that, that board members can't be neutral on, when it comes time to a hearing, is me. Because they, I report to them, they directly supervise me. Okay? But every other employee, their interaction with that employee comes through my office. You know, so it's, it's kind of a hard concept to understand, but, but, and that's not new. I mean, it's been that way for 35 years, ever since Oklahoma adopted their due process rights for teachers. So, you know, the purpose of this is just to make sure that we don't. And, and, you know, we've had, and since this rule's been in effect, it's allowed people to talk, we've had some instances where we had patrons come in and, and say negative things about some employees in this district. And fortunately, those employees were not anybody that we were in the process of dealing with in a disciplinary manner. So, they did not poison, well, they gave their opinion, but fortunately, they weren't poisoning the well, so to speak. But you just don't know what that, what that is, and it's just better if personnel issues, you've got to remember that personnel issues are confidential, and they need to, and, and again, public concern, baseball coach, football coach, third-grade teacher, high school teacher, building principal, whatever it is, need to come through the school, central office administration.
I want to go back to security a little bit, and I will say this, because I go to the high school a lot. Security, I think, has been improved greatly at the high school. If you're not familiar, or you haven't been, there is a guard that will check you. A couple of questions. First of all, I'll comment on that, and then, you know, the possibility of a student, whether it's on purpose or not, carrying in a, a weapon, are those guards now, they've got to have a lot more responsibility on their shoulders?
Well, they do. You know, and so, what Phil's talking about, if you, if you come to the high school now, after school has started, we have, the, the Fifth Street entrance, we, those panel of doors that we have, only one door is open, or unlocked, and you have to lock it, you have to walk into that door, and, and one of our security guards is, is manning a post where he will check you in. We, I don't know if we've got our lobby guard there or not. The lobby guard is a, a computer that we have at several of our sites now, that you scan a driver's license, and that driver's license does a quick, that little computer does a quick little background check. If there's an alert, that maybe there's something in, in somebody's background that would make us think maybe that they shouldn't be in our building, then, you know, we'll, we have, we can have a discussion with that individual, bring an administrator in and work through that. It prints a pass that the person has their picture on it, and allows them to walk through our hallways, and identifies them as a visitor. Okay? So, that's, so that's what we're doing now. It, you know, we're not patting kids down, we're not doing any of those kinds of things. But it does, it, obviously, we're, as, since we have a, a security guard there, there's another set of eyes that's going to be looking a little closer at people as they come into the building. So, we haven't got it all worked out. I mean, that's a big building with lots of doors, and, you know, that's part of the issue at the high school, is that, you know, we have so many doors to say that just because we've done this is going to keep somebody out of the building who shouldn't be in. I'm not naive enough to think that that's not going to happen. But again, it was, we, one of our focuses has been the last several years with bond dollars, is how do we improve the security in our buildings? And so, we, the construction that's going on at Woodlands, part of that construct, purpose is to move that office out the front. Exactly what we've done at Union. If any, if you, you know, had the child at Union last year, if you go to Union today, it's different. The office is now in the front of the building. You know, we, so we continue to work on security, it's not maybe big and splashy and that kind of stuff, but, you know, obviously, security's a big concern for all of us, and, and, you know, it, it's a fine line. We want our buildings to be secure, but at the same time, we are not going to build walls. You know, we're not going to build a fortress that, 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 that our schools look like a prison, and you, you know, you have to go through five different levels of security to get into the building. I mean, we are a public school, schools need to be open, friendly places, need to be encouraging places for people. We want parents to visit, we want to be open, we want to encourage people, we just want to try to discourage those folks who should not be on school campus from coming to campus to begin with. And if there is an issue in somebody's background, then we need to be aware of that. So, and, and again, it's, it's, it's not about finding stuff out about people, it's about the safety of our kids.
You know, I live by Woodland School, Dr. Pennington, and I got to tell you, I still, a month and a half into school, am not used to being able to go by there at 3:00 and, and not expect a traffic jam, and two miles an hour or through there. How's the Woodlands construction going?
You know, it's, we hope to be further along, we got started a little late, but I think that, that all things considered, you know, we're still on the timeline, we will definitely be finished by the end of the school year this year, so we'll have all summer to move those teachers back in, and, and get the trout people moved over to Washington. And so, don't enjoy your, your drive very long, because it'll be, this time next year, you'll be back in the normal pace of things. And, and, you know, I tell you, Phil, we just appreciate so much the community's willingness to support these kind of endeavors. You know, we've, we've really been able to do a lot of things to improve our schools and improve our security, and, and to make, and provide technology, and do things which really are the generosity of this community. And, you know, not everybody, you know, again, there's lots of things about Ponca City that we take for granted, that make this a great place to live. And I think that, that the fact that our patrons have invested so much in our schools, I really believe that, that our future will be better, because it will help us attract new business, it'll help us grow this community. I had an opportunity to visit with a, with a patron, with a parent who had moved into the community a couple of years ago, and works, and her husband works for one of the major employers in town. And, and whenever that company's trying to hire somebody, you know, the first, she gets a phone call right away, then the people want to know about the schools. They want to know about the conditions, they want to know about the number of class sizes, they want to know about our schools. And so, that's an investment that you, you can't go wrong by investing in your public schools. And so, you know, I know, and again, we've been very fortunate, and we're going to continue to try to find things that we can do to always be improving our facilities, and to make sure that, that only we, do we keep on the cutting-edge technology, but we stay on the cutting-edge, edge facility-wise, and we provide great learning environments for kids. And the environment for kids today to learn in is not the same environment it was for me, or not the same environment it was for my children. You know, we live in a world with rapid progression, rapid change, and it's just the world we live in. I had a chance, two weeks ago, to go out to California, to Apple headquarters, and had a chance to, to listen to the, to the Apple people talk about their vision for the future of education. And, education was a big deal to Steve Jobs, and, and there are some employees that were part of his original group, and they are committed to ensuring that, that the things that Steve Jobs envisioned happen. And so, they're very passionate about that. And the, and the work that Apple's doing, the commitment they're going to make, they're making to schools, and transforming education, you know, those are lots of bright people with, with lots of creative inventive ideas, and, and there's a lot of them. I didn't realize how big of a workforce Apple had. I mean, I was stunned at how big the facility was, and I was even more surprised at the new facility they're building. I mean, they're building a new building that'll be bigger than the Pentagon when it's done. Now, you think about that. You know, in the area I was in alone, they have 200,000 employees. So, I mean, there, I mean, it's just, it's a powerful force for change, and, and our intention at Ponca City Schools is to be in front, we want, we're not going to be, the wave of change is not going to roll us over. We intend to be on the top of that wave, riding it into the future, as long as our patrons continue to support us with bond issues, that's exactly what we'll do.
The one other thing was, about the board meeting, was our board is supporting no texting and driving, and I know there was some talk about that.
On September the 18th, we're going to have a national, we're going to, actually, September 19th is National Don't Text and Drive Day. We're out of school the 19th, so we're going to do that on the 18th, and we're going to make a big push with our high school kids about texting and driving. We all know, because we all do it sometimes, that it's a bad habit. And if we can help those young people not start it, then the better off they'll be. And, and, and look, I catch myself, and I see it a lot when I drive into Oklahoma City. And, and, you know, it's, the reality is, you know, we get so used to being in constant touch and always knowing what's going on, the bottom line is, there's nothing more important than, than being focused on what you're doing in the car and driving. And, and just because we have gadgets doesn't mean we should use them. And so, I know that I've, you know, made my wife a promise that I was going to be better, and, and I wouldn't, and I was going to stop checking email, or looking at my phone, and all that kind of stuff while I drive. And, so, we just had to be better at it, we had to help our kids be at it. Because the reality is, if we're not careful, we're going to start, you know, causing a whole lot of accidents. And there already are accidents that are related to texting, and, and it's just not, there's not a message important enough that it's worth a young person's life. It's just not.
We used to talk to our kids about speeding. We don't even worry about that anymore, it's about being on the phone and be, and texting, that is the big problem right now.
Right, it is right now. It is right now.
Anything else that you want to mention?
No, just a reminder that Friday night is our first home football game. And for those who either didn't make it to Enid, or didn't listen to Phil's broadcast, we had a, really a heartbreaking loss to end last Friday night, lost by 14 to 13, Enid scored with 20 seconds left in the ballgame. I think what, I wasn't able to attend the game, I had some family matters I had to take care of, but when I, as I've talked to those that were there, I think that the consensus seems to be that, that, that we are more hard-nosed than we've been in the past, that we're physically tougher, and that, and that, and that we're playing a little better brand of football.
Isn't it nice to see the spirit kind of back now in our, in our sports program?
And, and what I would say is this, we have, and Phil and I were talking, we've got three really tough ballgames in front of us. And, so those kids are going to need our encouragement, we need to support them, and it'd be great if we'd have a full house Friday night when we face the Guthrie Blue Jays, and, and have a chance to cheer on the Wildcats. And again, you know, I had a discuss, I had a discussion- And, and again, um, you know, I had a discuss, I had a discussion, uh, last week about, somebody was, you know, why did, we, basically talking about Wildcat Athletics and our lack of success in the last few years. And, uh, you know, is it worth the money and that kind of stuff? And, you know, my answer to that is absolutely correct. Uh, you know, look, we all, we're Americans, we want to win, right? That's what we want to do. But, uh, athletics is more than winning and losing. Uh, it's about, uh, developing character by teaching kids self-discipline. Uh, it's about teaching you to, to live with adversity. Uh, it's about, uh, what do you do when you get knocked down? Uh, what do you do when things don't go your way? Um, and then teamwork, you know, the, one thing you talk about modern, the modern workplace in America, and they all talk about teams and the ability to be in teams. Well, the best way to learn how to work on a team is to be on a team. And, uh, and, and, and that's what athletics does. It puts you on a team and, and it teaches you the value of, of, of working toward individual goals and, and those, or team goals as opposed to individual goals. And those things are just extremely important. And so, uh, whether we ever win another football game, you know, I'm not going to say I don't care about that because I do, because again, I'm an American, I like to win. Uh, but what's important is the values that we're teaching those kids. And their values, they don't get anyplace else other than on the football field, basketball court, volleyball court, softball field, wrestling mat, tennis court, the, the pool and the swim team, the golf course, the soccer field. And that's why we do those things and that's why we'll continue to do them because they are good for kids. Uh, now the adults sometimes, you know, the adults get opinions that are different. But, uh, but if you really are a real Wildcat supporter, then you'll support us, win or lose.
Now I got to ask you, um, former Ponca City Administrator Mike Simpson is the superintendent of Guthrie Schools. Is there a little handshake bet between you and Dr. Simpson?
Well, there is. You know, there always is. Uh, we, uh, you know, we, we, we've got a dinner on this.
Uh huh.
And, uh, and, uh, so hopefully, uh, I'll be traveling to Oklahoma City and collecting that dinner sometime soon.
You'd sure like to see him pull out his wallet.
I would like to see him pull out his wallet.
Absolutely. We might mention Chad Wilson's the principal there and of course he was a longtime basketball coach. So there's a little Ponca City Guthrie ties in that as well.
Well, Carmen, um, I was drawing a blank, uh, used, uh, used to be our principal at, uh, at, uh, at, uh, Trout is now the curriculum director at Guthrie. So, so we have several, uh, people with Ponca City ties on the Indian staff, or on the Guthrie staff.
We provided Guthrie some good people.
We did provide Guthrie some good people.
Have a great week and we'll see you at the football game on Friday night. That's our board wrap-up with Dr. Pennington. Have a great month.